Called to order the City of Columbia, a city council meeting on this November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, tonight, we're gonna do things a little differently, but I would like to start the meeting with our pledge allegiance to the flag at this time. If you all rise. As I'm sure most of you know, our good friend and fellow councilman, Dan Becker passed away this week. And um, it is um, you know, I think it's touched us all. We're all very affected by his passing. And um, I'd like to have this opportunity for us to share anything anyone would like to say about Dan. Anything that you were thinking about regarding Dan. I'd like to start off by saying that he he was a very good friend. And I don't know very many people who didn't care more about Columbia than Dan Becker. He cared very heavily. And I don't think people know this, but I want to make sure everybody knows this. We ran for city council at the same time. He went to every house in Columbia and passed out his literature. And you know, that man really, he kept saying, we gotta do this because we gotta be on council, make sure good things continue to happen in Columbia. And I will never forget that about him and his love for this city. So um, I'd just like to ask if anybody else would like to make any comments this time?
Well, we just did the pledge allegiance and Dan was a stickler on the way you said. And I, I just hope we did it right tonight.
Yeah, I, when I moved back to Columbia, Dan was one of the people I met early on uh, through the Sons of the American Legion. And he has uh, along with me, we were uh, started the American Legion Riders Group. We were both charter members of it. And uh, we spent a lot of time riding motorcycles together and enjoying the weather and everything else. And I will certainly miss him.
Dan's first love obviously was Donna. When she was alive, they were inseparable. That he never lost his love for the Legion. He certainly never lost his love for this city. And he put all, all of his efforts towards those two things. And he was just a wonderful human being. I guess that's, that's the best way to leave it. He was a wonderful human being.
Yeah, I've often said that um, one of the best things you can say about somebody is he was one of the good guys. And uh, Dan was one of the good guys. He um, he, his quiet leadership is uh, never-ending sense of humor, his never-ending optimism. Uh, and just his love for his, his fellows and not just Columbia or or any particular group, but he was just he just truly loved everybody and um, he will be missed for sure.
I'm really grateful for Dan. Um, he and Donna were really instrumental in me getting involved in city politics. Um, I definitely probably wouldn't be sitting here if it weren't for them. Uh, we could say encouraging, but more pressuring probably was what it truly was. Um, but you know, just truly a devoted man to his wife. You know, they shared a long, wonderful marriage and family and um, you know, and, and this city, this community, he just gave all of himself and what he did. And just really grateful that I had time to be with him on council and um, just the, the friendship that we created and he is gonna be sorely missed.
I first met Dan when I was in high school. And I thought he was actually doing his student teaching here, so I could be wrong about that. But I can remember at that time, he had been a gymnast and he was in tremendous shape. So, you know, he used to have this kind of like, I'll say it, cocky walk that he would do around the school. He was then a wrestling coach, um, he was a football coach. And one thing I do remember, I was on school board for eleven years. I think Dan retired during that time. But it was kind of like Larry Bothman, he was still around the school as much as he had been when he was fully, when he was still teaching. So, you know, I feel like I've known the guy, knew the guy. I got since I was sophomore, junior in high school, and I won't say exactly what year that was. And I'll miss him.
Anyone out there would like to say something? Sean?
Yeah, I got you. Um, Dan was my football coach, my wrestling coach. I really wrestled in the place. He studied plumbing and storage. I would tell me the double, the park. Back then it was scanners. Dan beat my cat. And I had to clean up the park, but people stood pretty much on the way, so. And he wouldn't do that just for me, he would do that for anyone of his, his students, anyone of the people he coached. Dan had a huge heart. And I think we all can see that.
Thanks, Sean.
I just want to say that I think Dan and Donna Becker set the standard for our public, making contributions. Both of them were equally passionate about what they did, they supported each other. They were a wonderful example of a good man. And it was a pleasure to work with Donna, he bested her and everything was gone. Dan and I talked a few times about her and when I saw those, I thought, there he did it.
Good comments.
And for me, I, I got to sit next to him for many years now and uh, he'd always tell me, he goes, when you're giving your management report, you just give it as simple as opening up a piece of bubble gum. That's what he said. He just, I want it that simple. So uh, you know, he, and he'd always guide us um. And I don't, I'm not sure he ever retired. I mean, he, he was always working, always working either, either at the farm or plowing snow. He was definitely a workaholic. Um, and I remember every time I would call over there when Donna was there, if you talked to one of them, you were talking to both of them. They both had their phones and they were both commenting on, on everything, so. You know, he's definitely gonna be missed and he's, he's a definitely a great guy.
Anybody else would like to share?
I think I said everything. Okay, like I'm working up there with Dan for a, um, one of these takeaways that I know when I came on the council, I felt like an outsider in some ways. I was the only people up there at the time. I was uh, the youngest person by far and um, Dan was very welcoming and he was encouraging. And he would take the time to make sure I understood things that I had questions and, and he was, he would come into the school. I was working in the school, he would like talk to me there and it, it didn't matter. Dan was always, always there and um, you know, he always included my Girl Scouts and the American Legion activities and things like that. So definitely made an impact in my life, somebody that um, I would look at and be, I'll be like, to them someday. Definitely the first people.
Boy, those were all great shares. Uh, appreciate everybody speaking up and um, I know we'll be talking about him for a long time and remembering what he's done. So um, I want to thank you all for taking the time to do that. Deanne, will you lead us in the invocation?
Lord, we're gathered here tonight with heavy hearts as we mourn the loss of Dan. Matthew twenty-five, twenty-three tells us, "His master replied, 'Well done, good and faithful servant. You have been faithful with a few things. I will put you in charge of many things. Come and share your master's happiness.' We are thankful for Dan's service to our community and we are grateful that he is at eternal rest in your arms with his beloved Donna. We ask your blessing on his family and friends as we mourn his loss and celebrate the life he lived to the fullest. Well done, good and faithful servant. May you rest in peace. Amen."
Thank you, Deanne. That was special. That's very special. Thank you. Um, I would just like to say that I was remiss in not saying that it is so great to have our student representatives here and uh, Aaron Pettisini and Rebecca Clark. And uh, they've been really faithful about coming to our meetings. We're gonna start putting them to work here pretty soon. And um, I think Dan would be very happy that they're here tonight because um, he was all about the youth and um, as Sean knows, really. So um, you know, it's great and uh, we need to keep his uh, memory continuing as we go on. So thank you very much. Uh, Deanne, will you call the roll?
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Thanks. Um, you have received a copy of the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. We have no readings of communications. We do have a planning commission meeting minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which you've received in your packet. We have two people that wish to be recognized to make presentations tonight. The first is Crystal Simbita Boggs. Crystal?
Great. So I guess there's a new application process. Did you guys get the packet of information? Awesome. So you had a chance to look at it. Um, Just a Jog is a second year event coming up that we uh, did last year for the first time. And last year we had a little over a hundred participants. So we're expecting to see an increase there for that. Um, January twenty-first starts and finishes at Columbia High School. So we've already got that portion of everything taken care of. Uh, you have the route map. There's no changes on that. We had no issues last year with uh, church traffic, so uh, that's why we kept the route the same. Guess do you guys have any questions on the event?
All the standard question. You've met with the chief and everything's good.
Um, not specifically about this race yet because we're, we have uh, Twas the Night Before coming up. Um, and that is, we've got six hundred people registered for that, so uh, we're, we're a little busy with that right at the moment. But um, yeah, that'll be part of the discussion uh, coming up here soon and um, that's part of the, the process, so yeah.
I think this is more than the second year for this one, but maybe it was a different race.
I think because we've had a couple of other races that have been like one-year events here and there that this one's just kind of, yeah. Because we've done a lot of uh, we've timed a lot of events out of the high school and there are other races that have been out at the high school as well that we're not involved with.
You'd use that court, that similar course though.
Yeah. Heroes and Halos used to use a very, very similar course to this as well. Yeah.
Um, my, my concern is that one of the reasons that we give the event, have the packet of information is that I'm just, you know, we really need the chief to be able, you know, to know if there's any concerns that he has. I, I don't know, but that's my initial thought. Is everybody else is okay with that?
I'm not sure. And I guess that's part of the thing too, with this being a new process.
Right.
I'm not sure who all gets that packet after I send it out in the notification process there at the city level. Being that there are police department questions in that packet, does it go immediately to the police department after it's sent in or is that something that we're figuring out right here and now?
Yeah, it's definitely a brand-new process. You're the first one that's uh, used it. But uh, police, you know, in EMS, uh, well, all the departments had a hand in making that, you know, application, so I'm not sure exactly uh, what, you know, what happened to it when it got here, but I do know that it made council, so.
I mean, I, I think if this was someone else who's never done a race in town before, I'd have more concerns, but uh, we're pretty used to working with Crystal. I don't, I don't think you anticipate any just being, just being called. So, I mean, again, it's Crystal's a veteran at this. I think we're probably okay with approving this one. As we work out what the process is finally gonna look like, but.
I think we ought to make it pending approval by the police chief, though. Approval pending by the police chief. I think that's smart.
Do we have an official um, declaration of that process then at this moment so that I know?
I think that's a mo, I'm making the motion that we approve the race pending the approval of the police chief.
Right. So what, what is the application process of getting that approval then is my question? To, so that I know that we're doing everything correctly and that I will get that approval, not just walk out of here and and nobody knows what I'm supposed to do next.
Well, let me just make like before, uh, as discussed, uh, our, you know, if you want to get the lives started, uh,
It, it was more of a um, we had forty people at that race. And yeah. And that's what we did. We changed the route the last time because we, we couldn't cover the police expenses for that event. Um, there was just more than we, we actually lost money putting that event on for somebody else. And so we changed our route to accommodate the police department not being able to get paid. And we kept it entirely in the park, so I, I do understand that there are those necessities and what kind of changes may be necessary because of that. But that was an event for somebody else. It wasn't ours, so I don't anticipate that same situation occurring here.
I'll, I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion, second, the proof of pending. And uh, the police chief, I should shut up only to say, you know, we should share this with him. So he gets a chance to look at it and review it and then he'll probably, you know, he'll make that approval review. You know, once he reviews it. We gotta, you're right. We gotta work out the bugs, you know, it's first time we're going.
We need to have some kind of a sign-off sheet on there, I think, that says, who's supposed to see it? Yeah. And get them doing it.
Yeah, we gotta, yeah.
We gotta work on that.
That's not your problem. That's our.
No, and that's, that's why I'm asking. I want that clarification of what we need to, to do because obviously we, we will have other events that we need to come here. I wanna, we want to know what we need to do ahead of time.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor. In a second.
In a second.
In a second. Uh, any further comments? Otherwise, Deanne, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Zent. We're here to discuss the save stadium complex restoration project.
Hi folks, uh, most of you know me. I'm Sean Zent.
A whole maker.
Yeah. Damn fix that. Um, I'm the president of the Athletic Boosters, which we're kind of spearheading the construction or reconstruction of the stadium committee, which I think most of you probably know that part. I'm gonna walk through some things and then I have some things to discuss. Um, we have chosen a um, a general contractor. It's Santini Builders. They came in with the lowest bid. Their bid is um, a little higher than we anticipated as it seems like all construction is. Um, we are, we really backed out a couple of our items out of the overall project or, or at least postponed them. Uh, we currently are a little, little under. Um, we, we have not raised enough money completely for the reconstruction. Uh, we do have a donor that really wanted some of the monies to be going into phase two that have given us permission to possibly use those for phase one to ensure that we do have enough money to go forward with phase one. Uh, on that note, they would like for us to continue to raise money. One thing I wanted to talk to you folks about is uh, the possibility of the city uh, working for grants to help our cause. This is a community of uh, reconstruction. I understand there's some things between the school and the city and, and all that. But what this helps is it helps that park which helps Columbia. Um, I, I know I've asked Lance numerous times about whether there's any grants and, and we haven't been able to identify any, but I will tell you, I just read in the paper that um, Beaver Local just got one for one point five million dollars from um, the American uh, Act. I would like to see if we could uh, someone be able to help me identify any types of grants or anything that city could do. The other thing I want to bring up to you folks is, uh, you know, at some point, we're, we're gonna need to do some paving down there. I'm wondering if the city could maybe help with that aspect of this project. What this project does, it helps the entire community. You know, if, if you have a beautiful park, but you have something sitting in the middle that, that doesn't look up to snuff, it, it brings down the looks of the whole park. So um, again, I'm here to kind of beg and borrow and steal from you guys of anything we can. I also ask all of you personally to try to send anyone my way that would be interested uh, in donating. I, I do have to say, Mr. Hudson is, him and his family have given uh, very nice donations. Thank you, Mark. Um, we do plan on starting construction or uh, demo um, here in the next month. They do plan on doing it all towards the football field, so it shouldn't affect joy at Christmas. Uh, but I did want to let you guys know that's where we stand with anyone, with, with our, our project currently. Um, so I don't know, the grant thing is something that I think can be out there. I did meet with Monica Rob Blaisdale about some state funding. But I surely think we can work on trying to get some other funds for this project. So I'm hoping we can partner and, and get that, that completed. Do you guys have additional questions for me or? So on the paving part, is that something that we could discuss in, in detail with the city or is that something that we don't want to discuss now? There may be, you know, as you know, you guys know the, the shape of the track and we won't call it a track anymore because we'll never run a track meet there. Let's be honest. It'll be a walking path. Um, I'm looking for ways to try to get the city involved and to help out this project out. And that's one that I think is maybe in your wheelhouse that you could possibly come up with and help with. And I understand there's fifty years and all that good stuff, but again, I look at this as a community effort. Not a, just a school slash Sean effort or a boosters effort.
Yeah, we could meet probably next week or something and take a look at what you, you know, what, what we might be able to do. I don't know the capacity or the ability of, of what, what needs to be done or what they can do, so we can get the right people out there.
And, and the other thing, like I said, I know, I, I think mainly you do most of the, the grants, but I really think we should be able to find something out there that could help our cause. If it's not for this phase, for future phases, I mean, you know, we still have other things that would make this park really sparkle and and it's damn close already, but that's with that uh, and a little shiny part right on top there. Any other questions? Do you want me to, Lance, just give you a call next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sean, I'm just gonna comment. I know we do have some minor disagreements going back and forth with the school, but that's not gonna stand in the way. I mean, obviously, you know, I'm not gonna put Lance in a position where I'm gonna give him a whole bunch of work. But uh,
I will.
You know, yeah, if he agrees to it, that's on him. I mean, um, but I, I think uh, I think we would offer whatever support we can. And you know, we'll be open to, to looking and everything, anything we can work out, so. Um, again, without committing a whole bunch of work for Lance, but uh, I, I think it's reasonable to say that we'll, we'll help out if we can.
Okay. I think it starts with, you know, when you go together, we'll see what kind of proposals and see what Lance will work up for us.
Okay.
You know, to take a look at. That, I think it'd be a good way for us to go. Alright, so. And we appreciate, we appreciate your work.
Thanks.
Your dedication to it. We know that it's important, you know, you're taking on a big role.
Thanks.
Pat, do you have other items you want to come up? Oh, you always get to come up.
I said it's me and Pat.
Please, I'll be sorry to do that. You think we could stop?
You said, Mark, I did.
I'd like to say a few things about the process. As you know, R and B was a seven-year ordeal, okay? And we made it. And we did have city help. We really did. And I can't say we had outstanding community support. We had enough that it was respectable, okay? We did have Firestone support too, and we cemented, I think, a good relationship with Firestone, so that's a good thing. But I think the thing that disappointed me in serving on this committee, which is entirely different than the position I was in on the other committee, is I expected more from this, from the school district and from the city. I'm a private contributor, okay? And I'm interested because I want to name the stadium for my uncle Dick Fisher, who was the original Columbia Clipper. So that's the reason I'm financially involved in this. But my expectation, I'm also a former, former school administrator. So I've been in the world of schools for a number of years as a principal and as a teacher. I have been disappointed that the school district hasn't been more forthcoming without being crowded. They have come up with money now and we're, we're pleased. We hope there's more coming. Uh, I, from the beginning, thought the city would consider, contribute something because the reputation of the community rests in part on the reputation of the schools. And I think there's a different way to look at the stadium than the way you may be looking at it. I consider it an extension of the restoration. Harvey Firestone wanted the athletic facilities to be in Firestone Park. And the reason he did is the high scho, the school was located in such a position, you couldn't have a football field there or a baseball field, so. We know he wanted it there. He wanted it to be part of the community. If you think about the restoration of the football field outside the realm of football, which I think it's going to expand from if we get to do what we want to do, uh, the whole community should be for it because the restoration is not complete. If you drive through Firestone Park today, it's beautiful. It's absolutely stunning. We get all kinds of visitors, visitors comments and says wonderful. The eyesore is the stadiums. And in fairness to the school district, they got that kind of after asking for years to have the authority to do that. They've got it. Now what are they gonna do with it? Okay, I'm concerned that we're doing the football stadium and the baseball stadium is just as unsightly. In fact, those two facilities take away from the the beauty of the park entirely. And I have not talked to Don Mook about this, except mentioning once that I hope they had a plan or so forth. But I think if you try to think of it not as football, but as part of the restoration, maybe you as a council and the city would be more inclined maybe you as a council and the city would be more inclined to make a contribution and help us. We came up about three hundred thousand dollars short, okay? Am I allowed to say how much?
We, we were really four, four twenty-five, but we backed out some things and we got it down to exactly around three hundred thousand.
We were trying to get one point four and we got to one point two, okay? And uh, then we didn't have quite enough and
The bid came in about ninety-three thousand over, so.
Yeah, so we, we need a couple more contributions. And I think it would be wonderful if council and the city of Columbiana could split that with the school district. And each of you give us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you wish to help us make our final phase one goal. Because we need, we need to do this. It's falling down. We had a decision to make the other night as to whether we could go forward.
We, we backed out again about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of stuff.
We really
To give us a shot, go forward.
Yeah, okay. So, and I want to tell you the other thing is, we've been refused another contribution from the Firestones. And I'm not very happy about that because they've been very generous on the previous one. And their reasoning may be some of the reasoning that you have for not as a group supporting the restoration of the football field or the baseball fields. The Firestones said that uh, it was up to the school district. It's theirs now, so they should do it. And that they had already supported us through the restoration and beautification, and they did, and they did. But I think that's being very limited in your view of the football field. It's part of the whole park and, and actually, I really think the other two stadiums should have been included in this so that we were doing them all at the same time. And I have some sympathy for this school board to have all of this unloaded on them. And I'm, I read the paper, I saw the paper tonight about CRA and the relationship between the council and, and Timing is everything in life, okay? But our time is right now. Our time is right now. We have to get through this first phase. We have to get the demolition done. And we're not done with the Firestones. We never say no. We always keep moving. So um, we plan to get back to them again, but I would encourage you because the schools have a good reputation. They're academically doing quite well. And I'm an educator, so I'm very tuned into that. I think Columbiana can be proud of them. Was the field too localized and used only by the football team? Yes. So in the future, it needs to be broadened out and it needs to have a greater use. But I think the committee is thinking about that and we have a lot of decisions still to make. But we're short of money, okay, is what it amounts to. We're short of money. And so if the city can in any way help us, however that would be, we, we would be most appreciative. And try to think of it as part of the restoration, not just a football field, because I think it's gonna change, don't you?
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's gonna change, so. Okay, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you. It's time for the managers to
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I recall that R cap uh, put our name in for the OECD Organization for Economic Cooperation Development Project a couple of years ago. And we uh, we welcomed them. They were here for a couple of days. Their report is done and they did a presentation uh, to the OECD Board uh, last week. And we were able to watch that via Zoom. The report dives into strategies for better understanding innovation that occurs in rural places. So uh, it was very nice to see that Columbiana was highlighted in that. One of only three other communities in this, in the city. And, and it also focused on the school entrepreneur class and the French class that participated. So um, we're gonna try to get you, uh, believe you got the link for the report that you can read. And we're gonna try to get the uh, the Zoom link, uh, the recording so you can watch it. It's pretty interesting. It looked like um, quite an event. It was, there was a lot of people there. You know, it was an honor to, to have Columbiana highlighted. Well, let's see, uh, Mark finished the TIF agreement that we've been talking about with SRMC. That's uh, that was in your packet. Our building department recommended that we do the registration process. That's probably, we're gonna be coming to you with that uh, soon. We're still working on the recommendation for water and sewer rates. Those will be coming up. Uh, probably, I think R cap is gonna maybe come in January to talk about uh, what, what their findings have been through their asset management program that they've been working on with us. Uh, we did complete a agreement for the M and E supply property for the electric department. So that's that, that's that uh, piece of property just west of uh, the um, the lumber place there and west of the current line shop. And we have emergency legislation on the agenda to complete the purchase of that, so we can get that done by the end of the month. It's a reminder, Rita uh, in the, told us that we needed to make changes to our tax legislation and that is on the agenda. Uh, our health committee, our, our health insurance committee met. We were looking for, for rates for twenty-two, twenty-four renewal. And it seems like our experience is improving a bit over last year. As you recall, we had some pretty catastrophic events. And the uh, the health insurance committee recommended that we go with um, Anthem. And that was a two percent renewal, so we were, we were happy about the um, you know, it was just two percent. That um, we did put that on as first reading on your uh, agenda tonight. We did, uh, the chief did hire another full-time dispatcher, the one of our original full-timers that were here. Uh, when we started looking, um, guess they're gonna take another job, so we'll continue that search uh, to uh, maintain what we have. We have been in contact with the uh, the county to um, you know, see if, if they've made any progress and it, it does look like it's gonna be a, a, a some time before they're able to do anything with us. All right, next item, um, we're excited to announce tonight uh, that FEMA awarded us another stormwater project. It's gonna be a nine hundred ninety-one thousand dollar grant. And we must pass legislation authorizing me to accept the funds and execute the documents. And that'll be in the court in Herbster area. Now, this is uh, just north of the Oaks Welding, which is um, the Oaks Welding. Basically, their collection area is gonna be taken care of next year, which is that construction. That's one construction project that we're gonna have next year. Lots and lots of construction next year. We have um, Court and Herbster Stormwater Project, uh, Beverly and Ray. Stormwater project that we're gonna be doing. We're gonna be paving Fairfield School Road next year. We're gonna be putting in a lift station out at uh, behind the Sparkle Plaza there. So that's uh, just a few of the projects that we've got going. So uh, this one will probably start, this will probably take place in twenty twenty-five. But uh, we're thankful to FEMA that um, this will be our fourth project that we've gotten with them, so. Very excited about that. Uh, Kevin Smith did start this week and is doing a great job. He and the team have made some progress on the past due uh, utility bills. Uh, moving on, the street department, the leaf collections going well. The weather was, really helped that out. The several departments helped get uh, ready for the parade. Uh, even though it rained, there was still a lot of people showed up and uh, it was a successful event. Had over, had over thirty-four uh, entries into the parade. Uh, we're all ready to plow snow. See, out at the water plant, we've got the million gallon tank. It's all painted. Uh, inside now, it is complete. We're just putting everything back together. And they'll, they'll be um, hopefully putting it back into service soon. Uh, Park and Cemetery, they've been dressing leaves and Troy Christmas, which uh, did open up last week. Electric apartment, we did have a couple new linemen start in the last few weeks. We're very excited about that. And uh, they did help uh, put up a Christmas tree. I don't know if you looked at the um, the tree real close, but there's some new star-like uh, ornaments on there and they were printed over in Hometown. Uh, and they, they finished them and uh, the electric department got to put them up. There were those uh, sand, uh, printed with sand. They're very, very heavy and hopefully durable. And there'll be great test for them, so we thank Hometown for doing that. And I believe that's it, uh, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Lance. Questions? You received a copy of the EMS Department Report of August, October twenty twenty-three and the Mayor Court Report, Mayor's Court Report of October twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions or comments on those reports? You also received a copy of the bill list for November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Any questions or comments on the bill? Bearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second. The Emmy call roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Old business. Resolution number twenty-three dash R dash six-three-two, second reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Columbiana to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Appalachian Regional Commission and/or Ohio Governor's Office of Appalachia Programs and to execute contracts as required.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? The Emmy call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-nine-four, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the execution of the twenty twenty-three NPP Power Blue Participant Schedule with American Municipal Power Inc., and that's Amber.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second. The Emmy call roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-nine-five, second reading. An ordinance declaring improvements to a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made to directly benefit such parcel. Requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcel to make cer- certain payments in lieu of taxes and establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections and five-seven-zero-nine-point-four-three and authorizing a tax increment financing services agreement.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? And one of those questions can't be read, read that motion. The Emmy call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-three R dash, dash six-three-three, second reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a ground lease agreement with Columbiana Youth Baseball Inc.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second.
I think we're gonna put John on the spot or something just for the heck of it.
No. I'll agree with no. It's been a long time. Yes, it has.
Thanks for your work, John, on the project.
Uh, you're excused then.
Yes.
Yes.
The Emmy call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
New business, and I would like to entertain a motion to read the following resolution as an emergency.
Don't move.
Second.
Resolution, oh. The Emmy please call the roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Emergency, did I read that?
I can't, no.
Okay, I, I got it straight. An emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase through an authorized agent real estate within the present city limits deemed necessary to the capital improvement of city utility services.
Don't move.
Second.
Questions? The Emmy call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-three dash R dash six-three-five, first reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and file an application to obtain federal financial assistance under the Disaster Relief Act.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second. The Emmy call the roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-nine-seven, first reading. An ordinance off, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Anthem, Blue Cross and Blue Shield for the purpose of providing health insurance benefits for the full-time employees of the city of Columbiana.
Don't move. Second.
And I wanna thank um, Skip and Brad for working with that, our health insurance committee. Appreciate your work on that.
I did, I just have to ask, um, the renewal number, uh, is, is that the is that the employee share? Is that, I mean, cause, I mean, like for example, I just renewed my own health insurance and it was literally a third of this total. And I was just curious, that's a really big number.
Well, this number's for family.
Yeah.
So that's fifteen percent.
Is that per pay period or? Just, I, I'm just curious. Per month? Okay, that's not as bad as I thought it was, but still pretty high, unfortunately.
I would, they gave us a break. They were gonna come in at five percent and they cut it back to. We twisted your arm. Well, we did, didn't we? I was tired.
Okay, uh, any other comments? The Emmy call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one-nine-eight, first reading. An ordinance amending municipal income tax provisions of the city of Columbiana set forth in chapter eight-eight-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Columbian.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments?
Was this just kinda cleaning things up, or?
As a result of the state's biennium budget, House Bill thirty-three, there are certain requirements as far as changes to be made in municipal income tax codes. And that's what all of this basically came from. Rita sent us the provisions that needed to be amended, matching nothing in our code. We basically then were able to put them in the positions they needed to be. They're looking at things such as remote workers and where they are taxed. They're looking at more at eighteen-year-olds or under eighteen-year-olds. So you could say that the state is requiring municipalities to beef up income tax collections. It's kind of the, really the general impression I got after reading this as many times as I have and trying to put it into our code, but it's kind of some changes that were mandatory. Not kind of, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? DM, you call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
I'm gonna move to council comments. Are there any comments anybody would like to make up here?
I have a question. Since Hex Restaurant's no longer operational, there's a sign out there on fourteen.
Yeah, we're working with them to.
Okay, that was my question. Who's, who's gonna take care of that?
Okay.
Any other comments up here? I just wanna make the comment that, and I'm forgetting the date, but the city, one of East Liverpool city councilmen approached me and said, "You guys have that great charter form of government, and we would like to know more about it." So Skip and I took a ride down south to East Liverpool, and we met with the council, and there were a number of interested people there. I'm not sure who they all were. But we made a presentation about how our charter form of government works, and they were so receptive and so interested in the matter, and they really appreciated appreciated us coming down there, don't you think?
Yeah, they had some, some very interesting questions they asked about how we did things, and I thought it was really quite an honor.
Yep.
Lance and the mayor went to Warren last night. Last night? Last night. They wanna us to participate more in the, in the overall Warren Youngstown Chamber of Commerce. And I said, you know, it's really funny when you're doing the right things, being successful, everybody wants a piece of you.
Yeah.
And like I said, I think that's really quite an honor. They asked us to come down there and talk to them about that, our former government.
And it is, it was, and both of those events were, you know, it, it's really great that they reach out. They wanted to know, who writes our grants and how do we get all our road spins?
It's magic.
They really wanted to know that, and so I think.
Then right af- then right after that, they ask, right after that, they ask, how much do we pay Lance?
They, they actually did, yeah, and we actually told them.
I said, you can have forty in, man.
So, and just since Skip brought it up, we did go to a regional chamber meeting in Warren last night, and I, I wanna tell everybody here, and Lance will say it too, everybody's like, Columbiana is great. We heard it from everybody up there, and they love what we're doing, and they said, your community's really growing, and and it's kinda nice to be there and take credit for it, and so we were happy to do that. And, but it, it was, it was a good day, so. Any other comments? I, I'd just like to say, I think the Chamber of Commerce did a great job with the Christmas parade, and it was really well attended for a really bad night, but they were so well organized, and I thought it was really a nice event. And with the Tourism Bureau doing the Joy Christmas coming up, we've got some great people in our community doing some great stuff, and I think we need to recognize them.
I think the mayor did a real, real fine job reading the proclamation for Paul Rantz. And then I was a little surprised that Monica Blaisdell also had a proclamation for Paul that she read.
In the state.
Yeah, it was really, really cool.
So it was very nice, and Paul Rantz, we've lost two really great guys here in the last month, and Paul Rantz was the guy that said, we used to have that per- I just have to say this. When I first got involved with the Christmas parade, it was on like Saturday morning, and about a hundred and twelve people came, and it lasted about a minute and a half, and, and I think it was Paul that said, why don't we do this at night? And so we didn't know how it was gonna go, but Paul had a committee, and he just, he really got, got people motivated to help out. And so everybody, the first year, I remember I went home and I said, everybody who had a pickup truck strung the lights on the back of the pickup truck, and they were all riding in the parade. You know, a hundred, a hundred pickup trucks in the parade back then, but now they're getting really sharp looking now, and then they're really.
Brand new, brand new pickup truck.
That's a brand new pickup. Brand new pickup truck, yeah. And I think it's so cool, for example, that the state and the city, they let, they let the kids, the students with the schools paint the front of the snowplows. And I think that's really a great thing, and bringing people together, so it was fun, so we're very blessed.
And our electric department got the Griswold Award.
They think it was a rainy day that day.
Yeah, they, they decorated the trucks on Friday, and it was, they looked, they looked really good, so. They go all out.
Yeah, it was, it was a great night, so. We're starting to take them for granted now, and we should really thank people that, you know, they're still out there volunteering and doing a great job, so. Any other comments somebody else wants to make? How about out there? Anybody wanna say anything? Any comments from the audience? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion adjourn, needing adjourn.